Okay.
I'm going to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And if everyone can stand up for the. Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
State of America.
George Sands Foundation under God.
Justice.
Okay.
First thing is the meeting minutes from January 6, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Oh, moved.
Second. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Tracy?
I received three emails, but none of them are pertaining to the agenda, so that's for later on.
Okay. Resolutions 21-0022 approving current payables.
We resolve the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 315-435-316214 inclusive, totaling $4,876,286.2 cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $6,182,818.47. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Madam Chairman?
Do I have a motion to approve the payables?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-0013.
Boring the performance of the Lackawanna County 2020 and 2021 audit. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the performance of the Lackawanna County 2020 and 2021 audit to Zelensky Axlerod LLC at no, at a cost not to exceed $147,500. $147,500 for the annual audits. 1st, 2020 and 2021. It does hereby enter an engagement letter with Zelensky Axlerod. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. When we held on January 25, 2021. Madam Chairman, who is here to speak on that is our CFO, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we've been discussing over the last couple of months, actually, we did an RFQ for audit services for the county audit. We got two responses, Baker Tilly and Zelenkovsky and Axlerod. We're asking the Commissioners to award the engagement to Zelenkovsky and Axlerod for 2020 and 2021 audits.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom? I believe we discussed this at length during our work session.
We have, Commissioners.
However, you know, I would prefer to stay with Baker Tilly, but I know we can't, but I'm okay with the new choice.
And I have been in touch with Baker Tilly and told them what the results were, and they understood and offered any assistance or services that we may need from them, that they would certainly be willing to comply.
Frank, will you just explain to the public what's behind us not using Baker Tilly?
Sure, Madam Commissioner. Under our Home Rule Charter and County Code, there is a requirement that we are to alternate or to at least put out for proposal audits every two years. And that's a protective measure built in the legislation so that no one accounting firm is auditing any one account for any excessive period. So it's not a, it's not a product of their work or a past product of their work product. It's just a matter and a function of our current enabling legislation requiring us to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0013? On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-0014.
Entering into a sophomore as a service agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a software as a service agreement with Tyler Technology Incorporated to commence August 1, 2021 and remain in effect for three years. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, once again is her CFO, Tom Turken.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, as I've discussed a couple of times now with you, the the ability of the county to engage Tyler/ New World, who provides us with our software for our financial accounting system, the ability to engage them as a host for our software came up in conversations over the last year and a half and so with New World. And the fact is, we believe that utilizing Tyler New World as a host will significantly enhance the, our ability to use and, and keep current the software that they provide for us. As Brian said, the contract is scheduled to run from August 1 of this year because we have a current standard maintenance agreement in place with Tyler New World to maintain our software, but our software that is now hosted on county servers. We believe that the, after discussions with Tyler New World, that the time period between now and August 1 is sufficient for us to converge from hosting our own software to having them host the software, after which we believe the utilization of that software will be significantly more seamless and better for the county.
This, this turns out where it allows them to update more efficiently than is currently being done by us hosting it ourselves, correct, Tom?
That is correct, Commissioner. I mean, the, the fact of the matter is Tyler New World now releases updates that we sometimes get to and we sometimes don't, and sometimes at the end of, at the end of 2019, we were about two, a little more than two years behind, and it caused us to have a hiccup with getting our W2s out. But from this point forward, Tyler will make an update or an upgrade available through their hosted software. Apply it, tell us, well, apply it to a test side first. Tell us to test it on the test side. If it works, we tell them, go ahead and apply it to the live side, and then we're immediately current. The other thing that this does, excuse me, Commissioner, is it, it, it provides for disaster protection. If there were some kind of disaster to our servers here, our data would be lost forever. Having decided to move over to their hosting, they will store our data for us. And if we have some kind of issue here, they can restore our data in the case of a disaster immediately. So it's really a good system, we believe, and better for the county's financial system.
It's, it's safer and more efficient than the current system.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0014?
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0015.
Entering into an agreement with Dadam Products. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a renewal agreement with Dadam Products for hazmat certification for the Lackawanna County Emergency Services Department. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak on that is our Deputy Chief Staff, Tracy Hart.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Rich Bar-Bolish. He wanted me to let you guys know that this agreement with the Dadam Products, they have been our hazmat team for the county for many years. There is no cost attached to this contract. They have been, as per Rich Bar-Bolish, our deputy for EMA, he said they have been very responsive and reliable. If there are any costs, the responsive party for this bill or the incident pays. But again, there's no costs associated with this contract.
Any questions for Tracy? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0015?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-0016.
Entering into an agreement with, for the North Pocono Trail design, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the professional service contract for final design and permitting services on behalf of the Lackawanna County North Pocono Trail in the amount not to exceed $182,200 to McNish Kunkel and Associates, 3500 Winchester, Winchester Drive, Suite 300, Allentown, PA 18104. This contract shall commence upon execution of the contract agreement. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on January 25, 2020. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak on that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Hi, Brenda. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
This resolution states that the county is entering into a contract for professional services for the final design and permitting services for the Lackawanna County North Pocono Trail with McNish Kunkel and Associates in the amount not to exceed $182,200. These services will be paid for out of our DCNR grant funds. The final design and permitting should take place in approximately one year, and bidding and construction will commence in January of 2022. The trail is expected to be completed by late summer or early fall of 2022. Any questions?
Well, explain to people, Brenda, if, how, what this connects on the trail.
So this is going from Dunmore at the Tressle all the way up to Elmhurst, which is where, at the end where the Y not is. So approximately four miles of trail, walking trail.
Yeah. It's a, it's a big improvement on the trail. It's a, it's a great thing.
Absolutely. And it's, it's been many years in progress, and we were fortunate enough to be able to get grant funds to do this.
Does anyone ever have any more questions for Brenda? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0016?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0017.
Entering into a New York Wired for Education, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into agreement on behalf of the Workforce Development, Development Board with New York Wired for Education, a metrics learning solution for the administration and operation of a web-based learning provide virtual career services, comprehensive and impactful career skills training, certification, preparation, and assessments in the amount of $19,000 to commence on March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Once again, Madam Chairwoman is Director Sacco.
This agreement stems from a formal, fair and equitable RFP process through the Workforce Development Board, which occurred this past summer, fall. And this resolution states that the county will be entering into an agreement with the New York Wired for Education for a metrics learning solution in the amount of $19,000, and this is for a year's worth of access. This web-based learning tool will assist job seekers and school students with virtual career services, comprehensive and impactful career skills training, certification, preparation, and assessments. These training tools range from Microsoft Office training to soft skills to assist with professional and personal development. Does anyone have any questions?
Brenda, can you explain to the public just what the overall purpose and mission of the Workforce Development Board?
So the Workforce Development Board was formed through the WEOWA Act. And we have a board that is made up of 51% of business members. And then also the remaining is made up of our, more of the, on the public side, which I'm also a director on that board. It's actually, we want to work with our workforce and to increase the ability to be able to have for job seekers different tools that they need to improve their skill set to go out and to find a career. And then also if there's companies that are looking to relocate, our workforce is definitely something that they look at. So the purpose of the board is, is truly to enhance our workforce within the, within Lackawanna County.
Does anyone have any questions for Brenda? Thank you for that explanation.
Oh, you're welcome.
Can I, is there a motion for Resolution 21-0017?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0018.
Entering into a lease agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a 36-month lease agreement on behalf of the District Attorney's Office to be used as an impound facility to commence on February 1, 2021, and to cost $900 a month. And the District Attorney is hereby authorized to execute the lease agreement. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak on it is our District Attorney, Mark Bowe.
Thank you. I apologize, I did get short notice of this. I know that my chief detective presented this at the work session. And I have reviewed the contracts. I am hereby requesting approval for the lease agreement as outlined by Chief Detective Dave Baker.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark? Do I have, I'm sorry.
No.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0018?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0021.
Authorizing the submission of a grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and authorize the submission to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the probation and reentry overdose reduction program grant in the amount of $50,000, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is the Treatment Court Coordinator, Mary Liz Loftus.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So we are looking to apply for this grant. It's through PCCD. It's for $50,000. It's to help us somewhat with our gag nom court that we applied for last year. So what this would do is it would give us the opportunity to work with the Recovery Bank and have certified recovery specialists go and meet with people in the prison and then get them connected to services for when they are able to leave the prison. And then this way also, we'd like to, we'd like them to meet with them while they're in the prison and then come right to the Recovery Bank once they get released from the prison.
Does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0021?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day.
Resolution 21-0019.
Yes, Commissioners, these are appointments to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to Lackawanna County Timothy O'Brien, 101 North Blakely State Dunmore, PA, code 18512, for a four-year, five-year term to begin immediately and to expire December 31, 2025. Charles Jefferson, 125 North Washington Avenue, Suite 350, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503. Also a five-year term to begin immediately and to expire December 31, 2022. Mr. Kevin G. Mitchell, Jr., 631 Hemlock Street, Scranton, PA 18505, a five-year term to begin immediately and to expire December 31, 2024. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority. Andy Scrip, 133 Mosswood Road, Roaring Brook Township, five-year term to begin immediately and to expire January 21, 2021. Kevin Mitchell, 230, I'm sorry, Kevin McDonough, 232 South Sherman Avenue, Scranton. Five-year term to begin immediately and to expire January 1, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Commissioners, these are appointments for vacant seats or to fill the terms of individuals who have since left. We talked about these in our work session. Madam Commissioner?
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0019?
Oh, moved.
I'll second that. These are all good people. You know, they did, some of them did ask to be on, so it's, it's a good, they're good choices.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Last resolution 21-0020.
Commissioners, these are appointments to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Mary Jo Sheridan, City of Scranton Treasurer. Marion E. Gaddell, past Secretary Treasurer and President of the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors. Appointments by the Mayor of the City of Scranton, and they are five-year terms to commence immediately and expire on December 31, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on January 25, 2021. Commissioners, these are appointed by the Mayor of the City of Scranton for the Land Bank Board. Their terms had expired on December 31, 2020.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0020?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the board to address, opportunity for the public to address the board. Tracy?
Yes. Okay, our first email is from Chris Payon. He says, "I am the Borough Manager of Blakely Borough. We have been receiving numerous complaints about the condition of Main Street that runs through our town. If you were to travel on it, you would see that it is in terrible condition and needs to be completely excavated and rehabilitated, not just a basic surface mill and pave. Mr. Lukasik has been extremely helpful and responsive to questions, but his hands are tied. This section of Main Street is extremely busy, and a Band-Aid will not solve the problem that is the condition of Main Street. If the county wishes to be fiscally responsible with our county taxpayer, taxpayers' money, a true evaluation of Main Street needs to be done sooner rather than later. I would welcome, welcome hearing from you. Thank you for your service and have a good day." Again, he is the Borough Manager and Zoning Officer of Blakely Borough.
Commissioners, I will talk to Director Lukasik about what is the total amount needed to do exactly what the Borough Manager from Blakely is asking and get back to you. And first, try to find the money if, if in case we have it through grant money or liquid fuels or anything like that. So let me look into this. I'll get back to the Blakely Borough Manager and the Commissioners on this.
I think that Don might have some history on this. This is something to do with appendate, appendot approval. I think this has been something that's ongoing for quite a long time. Is that correct, Tom?
Uh-oh.
No. All right, Don's vapor locked. Okay, Brian, you can get back to them. That's fine.
I'll talk after the meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Our next one is from Anthony Bruno. He's from Clifton Township. He says, "As a senior citizen over 70 years of age, what is the county's role and plan to get the vaccine to its people? I would like to know if there was a way to sign up for when and where it will be given." Thank you.
Brian, this one is all you.
Right. So first of all, we'll contact Mr. Bruno and give him some of the, the locations the state has provided to us for vaccines. I, I do know this, that have been multiple and many, many, many phone calls over the last week since the state decided to move the 65-year-olds in above bracket into the 1A phase. They simply said, a lot of these calls are going unanswered as these vaccinations, they call them pods, points of distribution. Because the, the phone calls are just being inundated, constantly looking for, for appointments. The problem with it is, is as everyone knows, is that there's not enough vaccines to go around right now. The reality of it is, is that the state is provided with 143,000 doses of vaccine every week. 60% of those doses are taken, taken out of that group, and they are moved into the personal care homes and nursing homes and life skill facilities. Leaving the state with roughly 60,000 to 65,000 doses of vaccine per week, which then is distributed throughout the entire healthcare network in the state, not just in Lackawanna County. So there are very limited amounts of vaccines right now, and it's unfortunate, but the federal government, you know, hopefully will work on that sooner than later to get us more vaccines, not just in the Commonwealth, but the country. We, our EMA and our partners in, in the, in the county are ready to go. There is a mass vaccine distribution plan the state will put into effect. I could tell you that constantly on the phone with the Department of Health, it seems like maybe three times a week for a couple hours a day. And their answers, you know, are what, their, their hands are kind of held and tied up because of the, the lack of vaccine. They want to put a mass vaccination unit or nation area in Lackawanna County, want to do them in all the counties. To be quite honest with you, but they can't simply just do that because of the second shot scenario. In other words, if they gave us thousands of shots to do mass vaccination, we would only be able to do 500 of our people, which we would do. We simply just don't have them at this time. When they do have them, the public will know, and we will work with the public to get them vaccinated as quickly as possible.
And Brian, you're trying to, well, you are working in conjunction with the state and following the guidelines as set forth by the state. Is that correct?
We, we are, and listen, all the healthcare units are trying to do the same. The problem is, is that once you open up a package, if you go through the 1A people that day and you have some vials left over, they're just, they're, they're taking any way they can so they don't go to waste. So there is, there's people being vaccinated, probably out of 1A, but there's, there's reasons behind that, and that's to, to get the, not waste the vaccines. The problem is, is that there's just not enough needles. There's certain, there's a particular needle that needs these vaccines to use, and they're disposed after one shot. And there's just not enough, in my view, personnel to distribute vaccines in a mass manner at this point.
Yeah, and Brian's been doing a phenomenal job with this. We were on the phone this week and with Senator Casey, and he's been a big help, but again, it's, it's not for lack of effort on our part. We are prepared to go forward, but without the vaccines, there's not much you can do. You know, try to get people ready and do the best, but Brian's worked very hard with it, and we're, we're on top of it. All, all we need is vaccines.
We, we had listed originally the 11 spots that are what they call pods, the points of distribution on our website. The problem with that is, is that there was at least three of them that did not or ran out of the vaccines. So, you know, calling them up and, and, you know, one, one particular place had 3,000 calls and only 200, 200 vaccines they can give out. Really, they had 400, but they can only do five, 200 people, so it's difficult right now. When we get more news, we will distribute that news and organize this much better. It just needs to be more structured, and right now it's not. It's, it's really kind of like the Wild West. Everybody's just calling everywhere. And we need to structure it better. The problem is, is it's just not enough vaccines to go around right now.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Tracy, you said there's a third?
Yes, one more. Okay. From Donald Lee of Waymart. He says, "Good day. I was writing to you today. My capacity as owner of the property located at 1315 North Washington Avenue. Just so you're aware, this property is directly adjacent to your parking area for the Lackawanna County Prison, and I think it would be an ideal site to expand the same. The purpose of this letter is to offer this property to the county for the price of $105,000. I believe that this is a fair price, which is below market value. I wanted to offer the county this property on my own as I would save the cost of a Realtors' commission and could pass the savings directly to the county at a more favorable, favorable price to you. If you are interested in purchasing this property, I would be willing to sell it free and clear of any liens or encumbrances and can complete the transaction in a relatively short period of time. The specific terms of which would be addressed is in an agreement of sale. Thank you for your consideration to this matter."
So this house is located, if you're staring at the prison, to the left is a parking lot, a dirt parking lot, and then to the left of that is a home, and that's 1315. And I believe the Commissioners and I need to think about it, and we will get back to them.
Okay.
Gary, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, other business? Anything?
I do, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
First one, just a matter of I received some calls from some of the local municipalities asking questions about county property tax penalty waiver for this year. You know, we, we did that last year, and, you know, their, their question is, should they, should they be looking at possibly doing it again this year since we're still in the middle of a pandemic? So I, I think we So I, I think we need to discuss this, whether we are at the county are gonna do that um to help our citizens out. So it's a discussion from here on, uh, see if we can do that. And once we make a decision, we can pass that on to some of these other municipalities that they can make their own decision. So just something I think we need to discuss.
Okay.
Secondly, kind of on the same note, it's hard to believe that we've gone through a two thousand and twenty. I, I just can't believe that, that was like a blur, but it's almost two, a year ago today. And during one of our meetings, you know, after we had to do our tax increase and, there's things that I looked at, you know, I. I stated back in one of those meetings, you know, it was our responsibility now as administration to, you know, really take a look at things and look at our budget. And find new sources of revenue, cost cuts, you know, where our deficiencies in some of our departments were, I, I just, I know we discussed that. And then we got hit with a pandemic, so, you know, kind of sidelined that whole thing and we blew through the whole year, I, I, I just, it was like a blur. So towards the end of the year, I, you know, a couple of my team members, we, we started talking about some things. And we looked at possibly putting together a uh, a bipartisan budget study commission to look at this and, and get a group of people that are willing to volunteer their time and, and start looking at this stuff. You know, our departments, some of the, you know, they're, 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 they're very light on uh people, they're busy. And, and they just, you know, with their day to day stuff, they don't have time to do this kind of thing. With the pandemic, there's, some of them are working from home, they're in, they're out, so it, it, it's, it's just been very difficult. So we, we started talking and we, we, we came up with a, a, a group of people. And I have, these are gonna be all volunteer people, I, I'm gonna read off some names here that are willing to step up and, and, you know. Take a dive into this and take a look at where we can go and what we can do and, and, and if there's anybody else that would like to join this group, you know, I'm, we're all ears. Um, I'll just mention some of the members here that are stepping up. So we have um Carlin Priet, CPA, the former regional uh principal in charge of Perenny Randolph. We have Doctor Jill Murray, President of Lackawanna College, would like to help out. We have another CPA, Joseph Alu, Principal Joseph M. Alu and Associates. I have somebody that I think we all know, very uh knowledgeable, George Kelly, former Lack, uh Lackawanna County Director of Economic Development. Have a retired bank president, Alan Daiki. Bank president at Burden Hand Bank and People's Security Bank here. Another person, Ralph Colow, Senior Vice President, Financial Advisor, Morgan Stanley. Tom Kelly, Insurance Executive, Connor Hellring Associates. Another one that stepped up, Bruce Smolokon, he was a former commissioner and the mayor of German, Pennsylvania. Wayne Evans, Wayne Evans Realty and former mayor of Scranton. Tom Bowles, Regional Partner at C Three Group. Alan Hughes, Clark Summit, or Clark, sorry, Clark Screen Councilman, Finance Committee Chair. One of the, a vocal citizen that was at one of our meetings when we were doing them live was Len Dobson. He was an executive, uh former finance executive at Emory Freight and I think also T R, T R L Transportation, so knowledgeable in budgets. And last one I have on my list right now is Elizabeth Snyder, Esquire, she's a, a practicing attorney and assistant professor at uh, in the Business Department at Keystone College. So we have a nice group of people, certainly, I think with all their heads, I think we can do a nice job and, and take a look at, take a look at the budget. And I've asked Carlin Priet to be the chairman of this, so uh, and he's done these audits and for the county, so I mean, he, he eats and sleeps this stuff. So he, he's gonna be a good guy to hopefully lead this group and, and like I said, if there's anybody that are, are, are the other Commissioners would like to add and, and be a part of this, it'd be awesome. And um, I look forward to seeing what, what they come up with and, and I know we'll have the cooperation of all the departments, so we'll see. This is only gonna help the citizens, the county, and, and I think it's been a long time coming, but with last year was just gonna be an impossibility, so we'll see what we can look at this year.
I'd just like to say that, Chris, I know you have good intentions, but this is the first time that I've been hearing about this, so uh, I, I could, Jerry, have you heard about this?
No.
No, so Jerry and I have to discuss this, we, if we have to decide if.
Well, I think we need to talk to our current bu- uh budget director and our CFO, and I mean, this is, this is kind of like coming out of, you know.
Well, it's not out of the blue, I'm just, this is.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad to talk it, and talk about this. Some of those people I'm very, very well aware of, many of the names.
This is for the good of the county and the good of the taxpayers, so.
We're not saying that, but we need to discuss it as Commissioner.
Obviously, you spent a lot of time on this, Chris, okay? And this is the first I've heard about it, and it's the first Commissioner Dominic heard about it. Uh, Joe Alu is the uh, the principal of the, of our campaign treasurer. Uh, it's, it's not something that uh, you know, obviously Carlin Priet was someone I've talked about this with, oh, many years ago. Uh, it's, it's not a bad idea, it's something we can, but we, we've, we've gotta look at it further, we've gotta talk to, again, we have a budget director. And we have a CFO and we can do those things, but, you know, I think, uh, I, I'm kind of surprised that this came up during the course of this particular meeting, that's all. I think it's something we should have talked about in the work session.
I agree, I think your intentions are, are, are good, but this is not the place to discuss it. Anything else?
Well, I think in the public forum, it is the proper place.
No, that's great, so, okay.
Anything else? Uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.